Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Kraus?
Here.
Missouri?
Here.
Caprows?
Here.
Whalen?
Here.
And we have the minutes of the September 11 meeting. Any changes? Now is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There's a motion. There is a second. Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Finance and administration, trustee Vader.
Strategic plan update. This is a reminder to complete your surveys by 5:00 PM on Monday, October 2nd. You can get them into the village hall. Bring your calendars to the next board meeting and you will begin the selecting dates to begin the process. Five-year financial plan update process begins. This process will be taken as far as it can until after the strategic plan is completed and then be adjusted accordingly. This year, the financial plan will be presented in January and formally considered in February.
One other item, Mr. Chairman, the audits came out today. You can have them, but please bring them with you to the next board meeting when the auditor will be here to present. And you will present the management letter and the findings. Then you can ask some questions at that time. And then if you don't want the audits, I will take them back. Those hardbound copies are hard to come by. After you approve that audit, it will automatically enter the village's website and be at your fingertips.
The questions will be next meeting if we have them?
Yes.
Okay. So that ends my report.
I apologize, I scrolled down too fast, so which way are you going?
The tax income received since the last meeting was $486,625.98. We received three income tax payments from the state. One early in the month and two later in the month. They are caught up for the first time.
That is the extra payment that we were going to get. Your first fee, our payment after the 60 days.
Yeah.
So that's your 10% payment. And there was no audience in the room, so I did not. Although I asked anyone from the audience, was she adjusting work? All right. Public buildings, property, parks and recreation.
Okay, we had several events lately at the Fireman's Park and everything went very smoothly. Had no problems. They were scheduled, they were approved, and we're kind of winding down for the year. I know we still have a couple of events like the Halloween and so on, but everything went well with Fireman's Park. The next item, I have been approached by both the fire department and also the Lions Club regarding a joint project for constructing a cot lot in Fireman's Park somewhere close to the concession stand. So Todd and myself are going to meet down there. We're going to talk about where we want to put it. We're going to start to get some bids and see what we can do. But this would be for the smaller siblings. Somewhere for them to go during their brothers and sisters' games down at the park, you know. So it'll be something that, you know, we had planned for a long time ever since we had the Ocelot grant that was in our original bid and we never really had an opportunity to do it. So that's kind of what we're doing. So that ends my report.
Good planning, building and zoning, trustee Missouri.
Building department, monthly report is enclosed for your review. The committee needs to discuss the ordinance for the parking of vehicles and trailers on private property. The committee agreed that perhaps it should be an municipal parking code and not a zoning ordinance amendment. So it is easier for the code enforcement and the police department to enforce. Some language was provided to the village attorney for him to prepare a draft ordinance and the committee will meet again this fall to tweak it before it is shared with the board.
Bonnie, you have that draft ordinance, I believe you two have received it correctly.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. What was discussed, you know, as far as the meeting? Are you going to make changes or major changes or anything like that? Also, as far as municipal code versus going as far as that zoning ordinance?
Well, the municipal code was decided so that way code enforcement and the officers can enforce it a little bit easier. The ordinance itself, there is going to be some changes that we're discussing. I don't want to say too much because I actually, when we meet again, I've had a couple of things weighing on me that I want to kind of discuss further.
Okay.
And then with the changes that we're going to make, so.
So does this mean public safety needs any about it? I have a question because I thought you said it had, when I asked you, I thought you said it had to go over there first, so it doesn't. When I asked you about this, or was I, was I?
Go, go, go.
When I asked Bob about it, I thought he said it had to go to zoning first before we can address it with an ordinance.
Originally, if we're going to be, if planning a zoning condition issue, when the committee met, they decided it would be better than municipal code. Now, does that make it a public safety issue? I, I don't know. To me, it would be, it is, it would be code enforcement, I guess. So maybe you should have a joint meeting to discuss the ordinance.
You're talking about a joint meeting, now you're talking about four out of six trustees. Just bring it before the whole board. Next month, bring a rough draft before the whole board. See where everyone lays in on it and we go from there. I mean, if you're talking about a joint meeting with two separate committees, which each of which is, you're talking two-thirds of the board.
Bonnie, I just, I just don't want to step on the committee's toes because you two agreed to have another committee meeting before it went to the full. Right. My understanding was at the end of the meeting, it was going to come before the board. We were going to keep it on, out of the zoning because that way code can then take care of it rather than going to a zoning administrator long-forming. But my understanding was the purpose of sending it back to the public safety committee was so that they could review it, make sure that they're dotted, hanging, cross, density, ignorance. We're not missing anything or the attorney isn't missing anything. And like you said, you had other suggestions, that was my thought, which way you're going to go. Did we refer to public safety? Well, yes.
I don't think we did.
If it's not supposed to go to public safety, that's fine, but when you said code, I didn't know if.
It's, it's starting and planning and zoning. It could eventually come down the road if we decide to do it that route. To me, it could come on the public safety, but I think we're arguing semantics. Just bring it to the full board.
That's fine.
I'm okay with that. After we meet again, though.
That's the way I think it goes. That's it.
That's it, sorry, that's all.
Public safety, ready, trustee Kraus?
The police department monthly report is enclosed. The EMA and code reports also. Mosquito abatement found report.
He's not here because of the left. We're done, I think we put the machine away for the year, we're done.
Final report is its final, done. And then I'd like to consider an ordinance amending the nuisance statement code to include all property and not just private property. Review of the ordinance by the chairman revealed that only private property was subject to the nuisance code. The removal of the word private from the code will also include public properties being subject to the ordinance. A draft of this ordinance is enclosed for your review. Talked to Bob about it, I talked to the attorney. Just something that, I don't know, maybe his semantics are just sort of, I don't think we should only hold private to the standards. I think we should have something we have to do to. I don't see us not complying with it, but that's just something. So do I need a new number?
Well, seventy-six.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the nuisance statement code, include all property, not just private property.
Second.
Motion on four, there is a second, any questions in motion? Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
That's all.
Public works committee, trustee Ford.
Water department monthly reports and sewer department monthly reports are enclosed for your review. Water building register for the months of July and August 2017 is enclosed for your review. Pump to bill ratio is 77%. Much better, that's that, that average that we talked about, snagged that in the middle, 75 to 80%. It's getting better. It's, I'm guessing everything being online on Penfield, who knows? There could have been some little leakers in there that we didn't know about that was causing some.
I, I'm surprised.
I'm surprised it's at 77, to be honest with you.
I'm surprised it's that high or, I'm surprised it's that high.
Could have hurt your numbers.
Consider a motion authorizing payments to brand excavating in the amount of $388,308.97 pending receipt of IEPA loan proceeds. Sufficient to cover the costs to pay this request. We're anticipating receipt of the loan proceeds prior to the next meeting. So we'd like to go ahead and get brand paid. So this will just get it all ready. There'll be one more final pay request coming in the next month so we can close out the job. There are some outstanding issues that are to be addressed, but I think those are pretty much going to be closed out also.
Yeah, we'll get them in the update on the next day.
All right. So at this time, I'll make a motion authorizing payments to brand excavating in the amount of $388,308.97 pending receipt of IEPA loan proceeds.
Motion on four, is there a second? Stacy, second. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Any questions in motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Penfield water main update. The restoration work is complete. Final walkthrough and the job is being planned. There's one issue regarding some evening pavement on birch or the penfield that's being addressed. I don't think there's much to be addressed. You guys met with them. I'm fine with that, brand excavating.
Yeah, work some stuff out.
Yeah. You know, work it out in the form of a credit rather than fixing it, which is basically the cost of the whole thing that they did there, so. Didn't pay for anything.
Do you still have to get it fixed then?
No.
Okay.
It's just, it wasn't absolutely perfect.
Wasn't to our standards?
Wasn't to our standards, but it's, it's livable.
You'd have to replace the entire road to fix the problem there. And if we're going to replace that with SDP project, that segment in three years anyway, I don't know why we'd waste our money now.
Wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation update. Reported at our last meeting, business light on Friday, September 15th. A pre-bid conference is scheduled for tomorrow at 2:30 at the village hall for all interested bidders. Bid opening, bid opening will occur at 2:30 Tuesday, the 31st. Village board will consider the bids at the November 13th meeting. There'll be a 120-day waiting period for the project to be, to begin. Basically, just like the Penfield water main jobs, we wait for all the IEPA approvals and a loan offer. Once it's complete, we'll submit for $600,000 in immediate reimbursement for phase two design engineering so we can get our loans and bills paid and then issue the authorization to proceed. It's just a letter to the contractor. Construction will occur over the course of one year and we'll close out the job in the spring of 2019, hopefully. Our first payment with the new IEPA loan will be sometime in 2020. We have a commitment for a 30-year loan at 1.5%. It appears that we'll be the first community in the state of Illinois to receive a 30-year loan from the IEPA. All our other loans have been 20 years, even if we go the full 10 million, which I don't think that's going to be. The total P and I, principal and interest on the loan over 30 years is $12,250,000. So required an annual payment of $408,333. We have pledge utility taxes approximately $200,000, half percent sales tax of approximately $138,000 and sewer debt charges of $108,000 to cover the debt total, totaling $446,000 per year. So we're be, should be plenty sufficient with pledge revenue to cover the debt payments over that time. Well, that's about it. Anyone have any questions on any of this?
Just since I wasn't here for beginning, I think these numbers are all pretty solid and these are.
As far as the revenue forecast or?
Yeah, like we're, we're pretty sure on these numbers, these are guesses or.
They're, they're barber conservative solid.
Yeah.
So.
So I was not aware of that.
So the expenses are, the expenses are way overestimated and our revenues are way underestimated.
I agree with John, this survey.
Yeah, this job will probably come in at about eight to 8.5.
Yeah.
So you can shave more off of that yet. We have a water tower loan or the water tank loan that we have to pay off over the next four to five years, which I was going to use the portion of that $600,000 reimbursement to cover. So right now, I'm feeling very confident that we can get this project done without any rate increase at all on debt. That's not, we can't say that for the operation of the new plant yet. I don't have an O N manual that's going to tell me we need this. The engineer is telling me we need about $111,000 a year in new money to operate that plant. Now, will we have enough debt coverage for that? I don't know. You're probably still looking at 50 cents down, but it's a lot better than a buck fifty. But the public works committee will deal with that at the appropriate time. Yeah, these, these are things that we'll be discussing. Strategic planning, it was in there, talking about rate increases and stuff like that, we're going to get into that aspect of it now. I don't know if that's necessarily going to be completely necessary. You know, you got to wait and see. The biggest thing is, is come October 31st, you're going to have an idea because you're going to know what the bids come in at. After, once that happens.
We've all.
You've got all the time in the world to plan and start figuring out your numbers. I can tell you that these revenue estimates are underestimated, which comes in at $446,000 a year, like it says in your packet. If it came in at 10 million, that's an annual payment of $408,000, so there's $40,000 push there with the revenues being underestimated. And truly, in my experience and time in the board and through these projects, engineer estimates are typically about a good 15% less than what, what the bids will come in at, approximately 15, 10 to 15%. If they do that, you're looking at 8.5 to, you know, 9 million rather than the 10, which would significantly lower the $408,000 annual payment, so I think we'll be fine. Village engineer drafts capacity management, operation and maintenance, C M O M, report for review by IEPAs. This is another requirement of the IEPA for all sanitary sources licensed by then throughout the state. And there's a requirement to be completed before we obtain the loan. This report is similar to the MS4. Storm sewer annual report, we have to file the sanitary report, it's different in that we have to establish a value of our system providing annual revenue equal to the cost of operation and maintenance. As you can see, we're about $69,000. That is normally given dramatic depreciation figures used on the collection pipes. Once this report is approved, it's just another step in the process for a loan that will be complete. Buddy, you want to give us an update on the sidewalk replacement program update?
Work in progress will be horns sidewalk tomorrow. I believe prenoisance, a couple more to take care of and then we'll be buttoning it up for the winter time till next spring or after, right with the snow next year.
Okay. Chestnut Street light update?
Yep. Met with King Electric. He ended up, he was out of town for a while and just waiting for the proposal back from him. It looks like it's not going to be a big problem with ordering in and once I get the proposal back, I got to submit it to Mr. Johnson or ComEd. I get his number, uh, with him and it's a matter of purchasing the equipment and getting the blessing from them, that's all we're waiting for.
Okay.
So near future, crush your fingers.
Yeah. We were at I and L over the weekend, I got some brochures from a couple of different lighting vendors and that. They've had some, a couple of different options of some lower hanging LED. They have stuff like that for different light poles and stuff, so.
Just whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass it on to you. I mean, just something for you to take a look at. And then maybe also talk with Mike too, see if he has a preferred vendor that, or distributor that he uses.
Well, yeah, we can do that.
Where he can give you a price, not only on just the labor, but also purchasing, if he's got someone that he typically buys stuff from.
Yeah, there's probably two or three different ones I know he uses.
All right. Route one, shoulder widening update. Still that work is scheduled to begin Monday.
Today?
I, I did see a board up.
Yeah, they got their signs up.
I saw a sign.
They got their board up with all their legal postings, so. It's coming. It will be started soon. Results of the fall hydro flushing program, Buddy?
It went pretty good. I came in and worked all week long with Steven a couple of weeks ago. We didn't have any water main breaks, flushed everything through town. I, there will be written, you know, exact gallons that were flushed in a report that will be in your next board packet. Other than that, I'd say it was pretty successful.
Water meter replacement program update, or actually water valve turning?
That's, I'm just working things out with Emmy Simpson right now. I'm just waiting for her, to call and schedule it. They're aware of it.
Water meter replacement program update. The village has purchased 100 meters so far specifically yours and plans to purchase an additional 30 meters. Later this winter, we won over that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, so. This is the third year of a six-year program to replace all the water meter system, all the water meters in the system to the new IPROs that we've gone with. Guess this is like a halfway there.
Right, well, in August, he, it's like 22 of them.
Yeah.
So now we're, we're humping them out, it's probably faster than we get them.
Fantastic.
Consider a motion approving proposal for the takedown of nine dead trees or dying trees in the village parkways. 23 trees that have been tagged for takedown by public works this winter in-house and an additional eight trees need to be trimmed. An additional nine trees have been identified for contractor removal since they're too large for our department to handle. We, I think Buddy just finished getting the proposals in today. And it looks like you want to go with AAA tree service.
I, the only thing I want to say in there, now, I did go back, I know what the deal was with Homer. They don't, there's like a $300 different, $300 difference. I mean, you can see the big one, but those two were the closest and Homer was $300 less. But they're out of lock port and they do not guarantee, once they threw, do the restoration and throw a seed down, that's it. You know, they're not coming back and doing anything. And for $300 and the work relationship that we have with AAA, the consensus was that we would just stick with that because it would be cheaper. If it doesn't take, we're going to go up and spend more than $300 on grass seed.
What I can say about AAA is when they leave a job site, you didn't even know they were there. I don't know what Homer's experiences, I've never worked with him on pre-removal, but I know AAA's.
So it just sort of board knows and, I mean, it's up to the board. The low bid was $12,000, well, when you compare apples to apples, I'm not going to say a little bit because it's not true. One has a guarantee that the other one doesn't. One bid was for $12,150, which is for complete removal of the tree, including stump grindings and restoration. The other one is for a total of $12,481, which is a $300 and 31, $331 difference. That one does guarantee all the work, including with the restoration. So.
Thought the lowest, just to specify, the lowest bid, I believe at the bottom, there's a note that says it does not do grinds.
No, it does.
No, the other one, the $12,000, well, there's.
There was, there was another bid for 10 from C and L. But that does not include stump grinds, which is a major, major, major order. That one was kind of thrown out because that was asked for mechanical grindings of stumps. So eight to 10 inches in depth, so if you're not going to do, do, it's basically, it's.
Those are not the requirements.
Yeah. So. We know what we're getting with AAA, everything's guaranteed. I mean, that's the way I would lean. So I think it's worth the extra $351 to have the warranty on the restoration work.
And basically that's why it's a warranty, so the other place that the grass seed doesn't take.
We have to.
We have to redo it ourselves in-house. AAA will come out, fix it till it's right.
Yes. Correct. So I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion for accepting a proposal from AAA tree service in the amount of $12,481 for nine trees that have been identified.
Second.
There's a motion and there is a second. Any questions in motion?
How many trees is this for total?
Nine.
Any other question? Roll call.
Whalen?
Yes.
Caprows?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Leaf collection program is set to begin on Tuesday, October 10th. One pass will be made by each residence beginning on that week through Thanksgiving. No guarantees of leaf pickup beyond Thanksgiving in the event the weather turns. So basically, we hold on to it as long as we can till we got to get the trucks ready for plow.
We discussed this in-house since all the roads and I think we're going to try and get out this next Monday coming up.
Sooner than that?
Sooner than that because the leaves are on the streets and they're piling up.
The drought's affecting the normal fall pattern, so we thought we'd start earlier. As long as you guys were caught up with your.
Yeah, we were, you know, like I said, it's, it's just.
So I will report that it is set to begin on Tuesday, October 10th, possibly October 3rd if available. I don't want to say October 3rd and then you have arm and brakes and then everyone's.
Well, I know.
On the 3rd. It's set to begin October 10th, if we get out early, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And that's my report.
I have one other item for you, John. Do you want to bring up the.
Oh, yeah.
The street crossing, the crossing of the safe house.
Yeah, I'm proud to say that after meeting with quite a few entities and voicing our concerns that flashing light down the road is going to be moved down the road away. We're doing it in-house. Got the blessings from all the powers that be.
We are going to.
We're doing it ourselves.
Sign two pan with four inch boards.
Right, we're going to remove the corkscrew that's five foot long on that thing. The amount like we would our street sign, which is an acceptable amount to the contractor and he will fully warranty the job. And instead of going through I Doc with a change order process and all the things that's going to cause, we could do it in-house in half a day. That's what we're going to do.
The only, the only thing I want to say to you guys is that, you know, the, the concrete's going to have to sit for at least 20 something days before we put it up there. I mean, maybe a little less. So you just have to be patient. And the minute that it's ready to go, we'll go ahead and we'll pop it, we'll bring it in and put it in the place. There's no electric lines, anything else. It's in a nice bright sunny spot, so the battery will be charged and it's far enough away from any trees or anything. And actually, if you know where we had the last water main break in on Route 1, that's in that parkway is where it's going to be going.
You should be able to see that thing from Church Road.
Right.
So it's going north in the grassy parkway?
Yes. Right across the street from Uwe's, basically.
Technical development, trustee Vader.
Okay, Ghoul Street boardwalk update. The extra railings have been delivered and it's just about, it's just a matter of having T and K complete the job. We don't have a date on that. We have to decide if the deck should be treated this fall or next summer. Bud?
Well, we're.
Can you treat that this fall?
You know, you really aren't supposed to, you know, you're supposed to let it dry out, but then if it rains and it doesn't beat up like it should be because it's womanized, then I don't know.
Ask our lumber guy right here.
At least a year, that's what I heard.
I, I'm not sure.
Jonathan?
I wouldn't do it.
Not this, not, you'd wait, right? Yeah.
It's my understanding, you got to let it dry out.
I think. Well, yeah, that's, it's cedar and everything. You're supposed to wait one year, maybe possible two.
A question on the subject, though, are we ever going to paint parking space lines? Oh. This is clearly different. Yeah, it's a good point.
There's some work on the boardwalk area, there's some work yet that has to be done. Whether there's some asphalt work that, you know, fine tuning, then I would imagine we can go ahead and throw them in there. We didn't pay anybody, we'll have to do it in-house.
It's just too, that with the water main job, there was some parking areas disturbed there that need yellow paint. It's not a big deal, but that has to be.
Yeah, and the guy did put in the service line for the.
Yes.
Gold vault, has to come back and either give us some money or.
I just suggest we paint it, get it over with, just fix it.
And did we decide if we were going to paint the six by sixes flat?
I, I just.
I thought it would look better.
I thought it would look better, but once again, I don't think I'm going to rush to do that, but.
I mean, we could wait till next year, yeah. Okay. Next item is fall newsletter update. We are about two weeks away from. Okay, uh, next item is fall newsletter update. Uh, we are about two weeks away from, uh, sending the publisher for a mailing date of October 16th. Facebook page update, uh, well, Marcy's not here, but, uh, we're planning on having a meeting, uh, Wednesday or Thursday this week, uh, the committee to discuss the Facebook page. So, um, hopefully she'll feel better and we'll be able to have that meeting. That's all about, that's all I have to report on that. Um, we, we met them at the convention, uh, and he's ready to go with the Facebook page, so. Uh, update on the Beecher Vietnam-era veterans, uh, ceremonies that be held at Prairie State. Be given by me. So, uh, that is still November 9th is, uh, the ceremony. And it's at 2:00 PM and the forms, we'll need them back to Village Hall before October 20th. That's our last meeting before the ceremony. So, if anyone's interested in filling out the forms, they're here at the Village Hall and they're also at the AMVETS. And I'll be going to the AMVETS meeting on the 2nd to collect forms from the veterans there.
And you said a spouse or a child and a veteran can receive the award?
Yes, if the, uh, if the veteran has passed away, the spouse or, uh, family member can receive, uh, commemorative, uh, thing, uh, letter and pin from Prairie State.
And this is from 55 to 75, right?
This is nineteen, yeah, 1955 to 1975. So, that's all I have on that. Any other questions?
Thank you. Uh, as most of you know, some of us attended the U.S. Valley Conference. If anybody wants to chime in and add some comments, I thought it was an excellent conference, as usual, picked up a few things here and there. Some seminars were boring, some were lively. A couple of the specific ones that I attended was the, uh, there was like a critique and a follow-up on the Coast City tornado. Uh, and the one thing that, that stood out in my mind was that they didn't receive any federal dollars or state dollars in recovery or after that because the threshold was set way too high. Uh, I know in lobby days before last year, I believe it was, right after, right after Coast City got hit, uh, we began lobbying in Washington DC at the state level to try and get that special change. Uh, it was not, and we're thinking about trying to take up that bandwagon now. Although, when I discussed it with the COGS, I'm sure they're gonna say to me, "Man, they did right time with all the damages it has been done elsewhere." There will be no money left for the small guys, unless those big guys got hit. So, anyways, if it ever happens, God forbid it happens to us or a neighboring community nearby here, it's, you know, don't depend on state or federal dollars because they, they never came to those from town. Uh, you know, that was one thing that stood out in my mind in some of the conferences that I attended. Does anybody else want to comment on it?
Just to let you know, were you able to see your PowerPoint materials on the IML website?
I hadn't even.
Okay, so, uh, if you're interested in looking at the sessions and looking at the PowerPoint presentations that were made, just go to IML.org, go to the Educate tab at the top, Conference, and then all the sessions should come down and be able to see all the PowerPoints of that conference. I got to meet Gary Binnenheimer, who's the EPA guy that's giving us the 10 million, and that was worth a lot to me, showing us where's the trip. Um, I know Frank, you probably went to a lot of social media stuff, didn't you?
I went to a social media one, uh, was extremely useful, um, you know, and, and they talked about the Facebook, the do's and don'ts and what to be careful of and, uh, basically, and I think Jeanette was at, you can't, yeah, and they were very, it was very useful, a good. They're telling you, you know, try to keep it till like announcements and events and activities, job, you know, things of that way. Roads closed, you know, keep your Facebook page basically to those, you know, try not to go off, uh, you know, the things that are just affecting the village here and that way. Uh, then I wanted, uh, new ideas for downtowns. Uh, there was some good ideas and tax, you know, uh, tax, instead of TIF districts, what can you do? But we're doing a lot of those things with a lot of our businesses in town and trying to draw. But the one thing that kind of really struck me is, uh, you know, to try to bring in, uh, more businesses, maybe we should be focusing on rooftops because the more rooftops we have, the more business will wanna come. So, are we, you know, we're trying to bring in business, bring in business, but should the board be more focused on rooftops and, uh, to bring in more business? Now, it's just something to think about. You know, there was a lot of things like that, which, uh, I didn't really think of, but.
Well, I think we're doing that.
Yeah.
We're, we're doing just about all we can and there's.
We're, we're doing that with the rooftops. We have incentives for home hires.
Right, and we're, and we're getting the sounds for home right now. So, but, you know, that was just some of the things.
Just a comment on the social media. I went to a legal portion of the social media given by Diamond Co., one of the leading firms, which answers, I believe, your concern. Staff should be maintained. And I didn't, Marcy doesn't know that I was gonna bring that up in the meeting this week, but there was a legal question during that, which I think answers your concern. So, I'll bring that up with them. And I think there's a lot of draft ordinances because it minds everybody, not only the employees, but your commissioners and trustees and everything else to a social media policy, which we currently don't have an ordinance for. We have it in our personnel manual for the employees, but we have no way of, of controlling any commissioners that may start commenting on, on the village's Facebook page. Now, you can't tell them not to do whatever they want on their own Facebook page or on the Beecher Facebook page, but on the village one, it probably should be rules.
Yeah, I attended a bunch of social media ones with Frank too and some of the economic development ones. A couple of things I got out of the economic development sessions was, um, they had also talked about the retail trade area, not just the rooftops, as to what you're serving, people that drive through town and stop here and shop and what they're missing and, you know, what we're missing in our community here that people drive elsewhere to get and instead, you know, try and go towards those types of businesses where they go elsewhere for. And a lot of them talked about branding communities to try and attract business, to try and have a brand for your community. Uh, they also talked about beautifying entrances to your villages. They said retail, uh, retail shops and stuff. Look at the communities, the entrances to see that it's a pleasant place to work and shop and live and all those kind of things. Also on the Facebook sessions or the social media that I found interesting is they had said that people used to get their news and information by watching TV and reading the newspaper, and now most people are getting it on their smartphones and their tablets. That 79% of Americans are on Facebook. I mean, that's the way to get the word out, but it is kind of an open forum in a lot of ways. So, 32% of Americans are on Instagram, 29% on LinkedIn, and 31% on Pinterest. Even some villages are on Pinterest, which I didn't realize, and they create, you know, photo groups and things in there. So, it's just kind of interesting. And they talked about the best times to post on social media to reach the most people is between 11 and 12 in the morning and between 3 and 4 PM, when most people are checking their cell phones. So, and Facebook also has detailed analytics available that, you know, we would probably take a look at to see how many people are being reached by our posts, likes, and then show demographics of the people that you're reaching, so. It'll be a lot to utilize, though. It's, it's gonna take some getting used to.
Yeah, of, of retail trade area, for like a Walgreens or a Dunkin' Donuts. A lot of people say, "Oh, Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks." They're looking for 30,000 within a five-mile or three-mile circle, and that's where we lose out.
Or they have that many people travel, you know, through that area, not just necessarily to live there, you know, near the main highway, so.
Here are our parts for this. She probably brought it up, but somebody we're not sure, like that one, we talked to the company called Buckston, which is a, uh, very large firm for attracting retail to our area. It was just an ex-kinectal feed for them and to do that.
And they were also looking at age groups and like the older people, they're gonna spend more on medicine and things of that way. Where the younger people are gonna spend more on entertainment and, uh, so they were looking at those things too for our, for our communities. So, that could be something that we could look at, our average age groups.
So, like, I can, I'll, I'll sit down and go through all this, because there's a lot of good information. And I know, like, with the social media and Facebook, we're in the process of doing that. But, I mean, what's the next step with all this information we gathered?
It's like the, uh, we used to bring back all the rochers that we couldn't, but now you can basically go to the, to the IML and download them themselves and then we can supply it to them over from there, in branch store, possibly in a strategic way.
Yeah, as, as far as the exhibit hall goes, I found another national purchasing co-op, which I'm having their attorney review, and if he approves, I'll sign an agreement with them. Uh, that's another avenue. Buddy and I went through a lot of different pamphlets today on incentive form and they're, they're lining water mains now. They're doing soft picking where they actually freeze the mains.
Freeze line?
Yeah, clean sections of main out. So, there's, there's some useful information in exhibit hall in addition to the sessions. And John mentioned what streetlights before.
Well, what's amazing to me, I'm sorry, what's amazing to me is that we're go to this, for this, and there's all these villages there and a lot of these incentives and things that they're all talking about, we're already doing, and the intergovernmental thing, we're already doing that. So, I mean, that's, you know, Beecher is already doing those things. Can we approve? Yeah, we can approve, but, um, we're already giving incentives for businesses, for residential and, you know, so.
But one thing you learn when you go to the IML conference, you're not as screwed up as you think you were. You start hearing what the other towns' problems are. You're like, wow.
I, I, I hear what you're saying, Frank, but at the same time, I, I think it's something that, and I, I don't wanna get into it too much, but you gotta think more long-term as far as incentives, okay? We cannot compete with our neighboring communities with our $2,000 water bill credit. Open up your business, okay? When other towns are, got TIF districts, half the size of our, our city, okay? Half the size of their city is entirely in TIF districts. I think we're gonna need to eventually cross that path and go down that road and start seriously talking about it. We brought this up years ago when we weren't here, but it's time. You, you can't compete. We're seeing too much new development in industrial, okay? And we can talk retail. Retail is dead. Bricks and mortars are dead. Unless you're offering food or coffee, which came up and stuff like that, traditional retail is dead. Bricks and mortars are gone. Days of Amazon are here. Amazon's gonna be having the drones bring a bottle of wine to your house in a matter of an hour and no time flat, okay? Where you need to concentrate on is residential rooftops. I agree, and we have a plan here. Okay, what we don't have a plan for is industrial commercial, okay? When we have businesses, and I'm not gonna say Dutch American because they needed to grow outside of their one location there, right? Could they have done it in Beecher? Yeah. And, and still qualified under the mileage that they needed in this, I understand that movement. But you had Alamein going, and there's more coming there. Why? Why not here? I'll give you one thing in common with every one of those businesses. They went into TIFs.
There's positives and negatives to that too.
That's all.
So, I think, you know, we talked. It's not all positive. There is negatives to TIFs. There is negatives.
But we talked years ago about improving, uh, putting water and sewer out to certain areas, um, you know, different things like that. Uh, and that never really materialized, but, you know, there's a lot of communities that put that in and have it ready, you know, ready to go.
Didn't it materialize because the board wasn't ready to prove it at the time?
No, we didn't have the, we didn't have the funding. We didn't have the, you know, we need to annex property. We need to do, you know, different things like that.
We looked into, uh, I looked into, now we're trying to, how the hell does Frankfurt annex all the way south to, what was it?
Yeah, and I actually talked to the mayor of Frankfurt and, uh, you know, basically, uh, it, it takes money and it takes to put in the infrastructure,
which we don't really have, because we're trying to, especially with the OAN was coming around. We're trying to see how we were going to do that. We'll continue to try and do that, and, you know, and proceed with that as far as infrastructure and so on and so forth. Um, the TIF district, I, I don't know if we have the, I'm not, I don't know if we have the right timing or location for it yet. We considered it at one time, go through the old downtown. I don't know. We can certainly look and explore it again, this without doubt. I would agree with you. That seems to be a common factor.
It's a very common factor, and, I mean, and we can sit here and say that. We don't know if time is right for it yet. Businesses keep coming and industry keeps coming all around us. And the time's gotta be right sooner or later where you can get ahead of it because the industry is coming. It's, it's there. I mean, it's, it's coming all around us. So, and, and like I said, I mean, there's one common factor on that, and it's TIF districts. Every one of them are going into TIF districts.
I think you need an intergovernmental committee meeting to discuss the concept of TIF with the other taxing bodies because I believe they have to sign off on the deal. We just can't do it unilaterally. That's where we ran into some pushback a few years ago on that TIF. The school district had concerns about it.
Yeah, that is.
We have to educate them.
They talked about it, that is one, because the one community, they had to get the school to sign up on it. But, I mean, for, again, and I don't, we've been here months, you know, up to 100 years. I mean, if we're stagnant, I don't know what the answer is, but we need to try something else to do. I mean, like Sean said, you can drive around any other community around here and there's, you know, uh, industrial going up everywhere. So, I, I mean, I don't know the answer, but I guess whatever we're doing, we need to revisit it because it's, it's not working. And, I mean, if the new board doesn't want it, then that's fine, but, I mean, I think something needs to be done instead of just status quo for now. Okay. Any others coming forward?
Uh, just, but, uh, we did mosquito payment. We just said it's done it over. Is there anything?
Um, I, I have the machine, you know, pretty much put away for the winter time unless, you know, you keep getting this 90-degree weather and then it rains all of a sudden. You know, I have the ability to pull it out and spray if we need to, but as far as I'm concerned, and we're supposed to start getting backwards cooling off again, um, if I, if I get any complaints about it, it'll, you know, I'll, I'll push a Dixiel out there and I'll form them ahead of time.
Thank you. New business is coming forward.
Just wanna mention with the youth commission that, um, unfortunately, as of the last meeting, and I haven't heard any different up to today, that, um, we will not be taking part in a trunk or treat. The Chamber of Farmers couldn't commit, and there were date conflicts as well. So, unfortunately, the youth commission can't take it on solely, and so we will not be, as of right now, we will not be doing that. However, the farmers market is doing a trunk or treat, so we do, um, want to support that. And we are thinking about donating, um, probably a hundred dollars worth of candy, maybe doing a trunk there. And we are also going to support, um, the Not So Scary hallway for the younger children at the high school. And what we would like to do is potentially pay for half of the ticket fee for each child that goes through. And that could be one in ones as, as also up to a certain amount, because we've set aside like 500 for the event. So, we're going to put that back into the community for the kids with these other two events if trunk or treat doesn't happen, and I don't think it is.
Which farmers market's doing it?
The one on Church.
Church, oh, Church.
And they're gonna be doing that on October 21st from 12 to 2.
Anything else?
So, I didn't get through all these emails. What's the 1201 Dixie? Is that just being handled by code and the building department handling it?
Or, uh, it's the one where the building permit is now expired, so.
Is that the one that was set up? Oh, that was it?
Max.
Okay. The one that was subdivided into three. There's just one there now, sorry, just lazy.
Yeah, I'm trying to reach out and see if, if he put a door in, clean up the back carriage and that's basically nothing he can do.
They cut the wall for a door and put this ivan in there and now the permit's expired. So, that's an issue, boarded up.
There's nothing else? There a motion to adjourn?
So.
Motion made now, but a second.
Second.
There is a second. Any questions of motion? Go call.
Basil?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Is there?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.